And we are recording now.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of May 19th, 2020. Going to read your favorite part of the meeting. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Norton Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a late and/or requirement permit to attend this meeting can be found at the Town of Norton's website at www.nortonma.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to participate may do so in the following ways. First, if you join online by video, clicking the link provided at the Town of Norton Planning Board website. Also, to call in only, you can call 646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 6391519600. And to join using the Zoom app, please use enter meeting ID 6391519600. You may have to try a couple times just to connect. So you may also be viewing this on Norton Cable Access Channel 15 or the next day on the Norton Media Center YouTube page. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access these in real-time type of technological means. In addition, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting or during the meeting to Additionally, you'll find meeting materials at the Norton Planning Board website, Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real-time through technological means. In the event that we're unable to do so despite our best efforts, we'll post on the Town of Norton's website. Again, that's www.nortonma.org. And audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive directory to the proceedings as soon as possible thereafter. That being said, welcome. We have, Paul, there's no...
We actually have quite a few bills.
We have quite a few bills.
Yeah. Yeah, and some of them came up. I'm sorry?
Oh, go ahead. I didn't see them there.
So we have a few bills here in Dropbox. If you go into the Bills folder, we actually have a couple related to Horstley Witten for their instruction, our construction inspection for the Blue Star Business Park. There are two invoices there for March and April. We also have an invoice from John Chessia for his work that he did with Cumberland Farms. Additionally, we have two bills from Serpent. One is there the work they've been conducting for the master plan. So again, you'll recall that has come out of multiple grants, and that's what that is. The grants are what are being applied to for the work they've been doing. And they're also work they did for us and Condyne for an attempt at a grant for their Economic Development Assistance Grant, which Condyne actually has given us the check for the balance on that bill. So that way, we can finally pay Serpent off for that. And then we also have, since recently with us having to work remotely, the town purchased a cellphone, and so there's a Verizon invoice for some of the expenses for that.
Okay. I had a question. The Chessia invoice, is that his second one for this? I know we were...
Yeah, he submitted it shortly after he had completed the work. It was supposed to go out a couple of weeks ago, but we haven't paid for that. This was the addition of the addendum that had been agreed to.
Oh, was it agreed to?
Yeah, by Cumberland Farms.
Okay. Yeah, because I know there was some concern, well, at least I had concern about it. So if Cumberland Farms agrees, then it's fine. Does anyone have questions on these bills or on the board?
Just the Serpent one, the second one, talks about EPA letter. What is that for, Paul?
I'm sorry, we're in which?
The second letter, the one number 17 for 3,571, that's a contract balance issue. It was based on EPA letter and applied investment commitment?
Is that on the Serpent?
Yeah, it's Serpent.
Yeah, it's Economic Development Agents. See? Oh, this was, and that was, we were attempting to get a letter from the EPA. So that's what that was. The representative from Serpent was trying to get a letter from the EPA for the EDA.
And then the question, the Horstley Witten reports, who does go there? Does go to Conservation Commission or to the Building Inspector?
They go, they, I'm sorry. Yes, they go, and they go, I receive them, Conservation receives them, Building Commissioner receives them. And in this case, too, Conservation particularly because these are, a lot of them are stormwater-related. But the way we had worked on Blue Star, remember, we were combining, we jointly did the effort with Conservation Commission, so we're handling the administration of that fund. So Condyne issued the check that we adopted, so. Yeah.
Just to highlight it, Nicole asked a question in the chat about the host admitting participants, but they shouldn't be let in automatically, correct?
Yes. Yes. I am now the host. There was a little confusion because Charlene was the host, but she has handed it off to me. So I can control muting and whatnot, but as a practice, when it's the public hearing, we don't have a waiting room. So we just let everyone in.
All right, anyone else on the board with questions on these? So I guess we can approve these as a batch. We don't have to go individually.
Mr. Scott, I would move to approve the bills as...
This is Scott, I'll second.
Hey, Scott.
Hey.
All right. Without further discussion, let's go down the line. Tim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lauren?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right. So we're approving those bills. Now we have two, we have two sets of minutes from 4/28. We'll start with that one. We have the April 28th minutes. Does everyone have a chance to look at these?
My apologies, we ended up getting the May 5th minutes to you just a short while ago.
Okay, so we can just do the 4/28 ones. I think that makes sense. Keep the next ones for the next meeting. Was that, Lauren, did you say you had a question?
Yeah, are we moving forward with April 28 things?
Yes.
It's notes on those. I believe Jeffrey mentioned two things in his presentation, that the site triangle needs to be on the plan. And then basically the signs, landscaping, other features, including the snow windows have to be within the triangle, how we have to exceed three, two and a half feet. And then I believe the applicant indicated on response, one of the comments, that the main driver was 24 feet and the rear one was 19 feet. And that the fire chief had okay one entrance and okay the turning radius. And Paul, I think you were going to be confirming that and getting something from them in writing?
Okay, so let's kind of break this down. What do you want to see included in these minutes?
I'd like to see that the consultant requested that the site triangle needs to be on the plan. And that no signs, landscaping, or other features, including snow windows within the site triangle are to exceed two and a half feet high. And then that the applicant indicated that the fire chief had okay one entrance for the project and was okay with the turning radius. And I believe Paul was going to give the subject being confirmed by the... I think we're looking for something written from the chief of this, from the fire department.
I recall that as well, Lauren. She seemed to imply that he had told her over the phone, and it just needed to be confirmed in writing. I'm not sure if Paul, have you been able to connect that yet or not?
Are you on mute, Paul?
Sorry about that. He did, they have, and we've received correspondence from the fire department for that. But the comment in the minutes was the request for written, so we'll update that to include that comment.
Anything else on those? All right, so I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve those with the corrections as Lauren added with the comment on the site triangle. The no signs, landscaping, not to exceed two and a half feet high. And the turning radius and... What was the other one?
One entrance.
And one entrance, okay. So we need a motion to approve those corrections.
So moved.
Tim, is there a second?
This is Julie.
Okay, we'll tell Tim.
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lauren?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right. So we'll hold off on the May 5th minutes of the next meeting. Everyone's ready with that? All right, we have a couple of discussion items. Paul, do you want to start up with this first one here?
Yes.
I talked about it a little bit before, so.
Yeah, let me just pull this up and then share it with you so people can see it. My apologies, I had this up and, okay, there you go. So this is in regards to a discussion we had recently as we're, you know, as we've been meeting remotely, there creates some challenges for us, one of which is one of which is the ability to sign documents such as A&Rs and even subdivisions if we had any. In fact, we have one right after this. And so I reached out to Town Council and asked her to give us some information, which I included in Dropbox. You do have under state law the ability as a board to, once you've rendered a decision, to appoint a member of the planning board to sign on behalf of the board. So for example, you recently endorsed an A&R for Cumberland Farms, but we haven't been able to sign it because of, you know, remote participation. This would allow that person, whoever you designate, to sign it on its behalf. So, but the key mechanism is, is there is a letter that Amy has drafted that you all would need to sign and that we would forward to the Registry of Deeds so that they have it on record that if they, you get a, if they receive an A&R or subdivision with one signature on it, it needs to be this person. And I do want to point out, it's actually the name of a person, it's not a position. So it has its own timeframes, obviously. So you wouldn't say the chair, you would have to say Steve if he's the person. Or again, it could be any, any member who signs it.
Paul, how would we sign that letter?
I'm sorry?
Paul, how would we sign that letter?
So what you would do, if you agree to do this, is you would, the signature page is the last page, and that's all there is on it. So each of you would just sign it, scan it, and then send it to me and Nicole. And then we will, you know, I think we would just attach each page to the document. And if you'd like, I can show you what that document looks like. Chair, are you okay if I do a share screen?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, it's not for signing decisions or anything like that, it's just for the A&R and...
It's just signing the plan itself. So as you know, with an A&R or even a subdivision, like... I'm sorry? So if you would, it's not the decision. Yeah, it's not the decision, it's the plan set itself. So as you know, on an A&R or a subdivision, the board, you know, you need a quorum of board members to sign that document, but this would give you the ability, once the board has rendered a decision, to authorize just one person to sign the plan set itself. In the case of the A&R, the MYLAR, the MYLAR document. So I will just show this to you quickly. So again, this would be addressed to the registry. I've gone ahead and filled in certain information, basically the members and just a yay vote. But you can see here, we would need to authorize who would take, who would be the person to sign for an A&R, and you can see the statutory provisions under Mass. General Law 41, Section 81P is for A&Rs. And then you can also vote under Chapter 41, Section 81X, to endorse subdivision plans. And that's pertinent because the next agenda item is dealing with a Scrutner's error to a subdivision plan. So this is timely, so this would give the board the flexibility of having one person sign it, should the board agree to approve that. And then we would have to submit this to the registry. And then here, you would just sign, you would just sign your name to one line, date it, scan it, and get it back to us, and then we would get it off to the registry.
Do they need the originals?
They are accepting digital submissions now.
The scanned copies, would they accept the scanned copy?
I, well, let me, there's something else I'd want to pull up here then. Amy had a...
Yeah, they're accepting scanned copies.
Yeah, I believe they are, but I want to show this to you. This is Amy's, Town Council's memo that she had stated, she does state in here that it would be best that, I'm just trying to find this, but she does state that if members should just sign the back page. Oh, okay, right. Can you see this memo, the PDF?
Yes.
Okay, so it does say that at this time, unless it is possible and safe for three board members to visit Town Hall, which we're not recommending, each of the board members will print out and sign a signature page. Oh, and then you could send, you know what, why don't you do this, scan it and then mail it to us. And then we'll put it together and send it off. So we'll have, we will have the originals then, so if you're able to just scan it or certainly mail it to me.
And we would mail that to Town Hall?
Yes.
Paul, it's Julie. Can we put it in the Dropbox out front if we're going to pass by?
Yeah, absolutely.
And my second, just kind of clarifying question is, this is only while the state of emergency takes place, right? Like Amy wrote in the memo, and then at the end of that, we would basically go back to normal business?
You can, the letter, if you look at it, the letter doesn't make that point. But I would say, you know, you certainly could modify the letter to make that clear. But you could also, you know, if you left it open, it would give you an option should something unforeseen happen. Obviously, when things go back to normal, you probably don't need this provision, but you know, if something did come up, at least you would have this, you know, as an option. So that's up to the board if the board wants to add that provision to the letter.
I know we're talking about this before, too, and, you know, 99 times out of 100, we're all going to be there, and once it's approved, we're going to sign the MYLAR anyways. I think we had one time that I can remember in the past three years where we weren't able to, where there had to be a correction. So I mean, in that case, if we kept it open even afterwards, that would be what it would be for. But other than that, I don't see it being needed once we're back to in-person meetings.
And because we'd all need to sign the signature page, or a majority would, we'd kind of have to approve it anyway.
Right, then you still have to approve the action. So it doesn't, you still have that authority.
Paul? All right, so anyone on the board have questions on this? What do you guys think? I had offered to do it because I'm back and forth to my office right in the center of town. So if someone else wants to do it, I'm fine with that, too. It's whatever is easier, whatever makes it easier for everybody.
Steve? Steve?
Oh, yeah.
Um, when are we going to get back to in-person meetings?
Hold on, Peter, we're in the middle of something here, okay? Hopefully soon, though.
This is Tim. I'd be fine pursuing this course of action. And I think I agree with Steve that we don't need to necessarily tie it to the COVID-19 state of emergency. Because we don't know what the next emergency is going to be.
And if, if people feel strongly about it, once we're back to in-person meetings, we can vote to remove it at that point, too. So it's not something we're going to be married to forever here. So I guess I'm looking for a motion on it then, if there's not any other questions.
We'll move the ballot to be approved. This is Joe, I'm sorry.
This is Scott, I'll second.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
You do need to nominate someone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Since I made the motion, the motion should include the nomination of Steve as the signatory.
All right, this is Dr. Scott.
I will continue my...
Any further discussion, folks? Okay, Tim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lauren?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
And, oh, yes. So that'll be in the Dropbox, we can put out the pages, and then everybody sign their line and send it into the Town Hall.
And then I'll update the document to indicate that Steve is the point person now.
Would you put that in the Dropbox with his name in it, so we can have the document with his name in it?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, definitely. Okay. Okay, and we're in the Blue Star Business Park, just, I don't want to forget about this. We have, I have something about Serpent I wanted to bring up at the end of the meeting, so if I forget, just somebody stop me and I'll bring that up. Okay. So there's an error. Paul, do you want us to start with this, or do you want to have Blue Star go through it?
We'll introduce it. I know that Jeff O'Neil and Mark Dibber here from Condyne, I don't know if anyone else is, but they brought it to our attention recently that there was a Scrutner's error on the subdivision plan that was approved back in early 2019 on Blue Star Business Park definitive plan. And the error was they did not include the stamp of the surveyor. So with that, I see Jeff.
How's everyone doing? Been a while since we talked, so why don't I give you a quick update of the park, too? I think it'd be prudent. So if you're driven by it, Building 5 is, walls are up, steel is up. Building 4, walls are up, steel is due to be installed on the June 8th. Roadway widening is continuing, there's sewer connection as well. Today, we funded in excess of $750,000 for the Town of Norton for permits, connection fees, and lease details. And we have 50% of Building 5 leased, and we have some mining tenants looking at Building 4 presently. So hopefully that will proceed well. So before you is a, again, as Paul introduced, there's a Scrutner's error that we found on the plans where the plans of subdivision requires the surveyor's stamp. Also enclosed, you have an affidavit from John Hellman. John Hellman is the surveyor, the professional land surveyor for all of Blue Star. He works in conjunction with Mark Dibb. So what we're asking is to clean up and re-sign and re-execute the subdivision plan, the recorded subdivision plan, and then recertify so we can re-record at the Registry of Deeds. And then within the affidavit that you'll see in John Hellman describes everything that he's done on the project. So he verifies the exact... And then you'll have a certificate from our council, which Susan Bernstein, sounds like she just joined. So if things are proceeding well up there, we'd like to clean this document up. There's Susan. Does anyone have any questions?
I've got a question, Jeff. Back in September, you filed a... I've got a question, Jeff, uh, back in, uh, in September, you filed an A and R that modified that plan. Do the plans that you have now reflect that modification?
The recorded subdivision plan, yes, what you have in front of you, that plan, there are no changes whatsoever. Also, it is, the only change was adding John Hellman's stamp on the plan.
No, no, but in, in September of 2019, it came before the board, and he said that there was a portion of the land that didn't belong to you, and you filed an A and R to establish a new lot line. So now you're asking us to sign this plan, I understand he didn't sign it before, but this is the surveyor who basically would have picked up this lot change, the lot line itself, and I'm just asking whether the plans you're giving us now to re-sign reflect that change.
Yes, they do. Is that correct, Mark?
Well, this is an exact duplicate of the previous plan, um, so it does not reflect that change. But the A and R will still be valid as well, um, so I think, you know, the A and R will still have the final plans. It's just, this is, you know, nothing changed. It's, uh, to get the proper type of recording on, at the registry, which is one with a legal recording would have the surveyor's stamp on it, so nothing has changed, and the A and R will still be applicable.
But the, but you're asking us to certify and update those plans as of today? Those plans today are not accurate, because they really don't reflect the correct lot lines? So I, I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just, I, I mean, we, we, we have to re-sign, if we had a re-, I mean, you just have to put a stamp on it, put a stamp on it, record it. But you're asking us to sign it as of today, and as of today, you know those plans are not accurate, because in fact, there's a different lot line. So is it possible to modify that just to reflect the correct lot line?
Yeah, what, what we could do is just get new bylaws over to Paul on Thursday with that, those new lines, and, and it, you could probably still even vote on, you know, as long as it's the existing, uh, plan. You know, it's, it's just bylaw right now, so we could reprint and, and just make sure we're at the latest, um. That wouldn't be an issue, and get you new, new bylaws, um, if that's acceptable to the board, and we can just agree that, that what we give you will be the latest, um, updated plans.
But, Orin, I hope you understand that the only difference in the subdivision plan that you are presented today is that the land surveyor's stamp is now on it, uh, which should have been the case at the time that the subdivision plan was endorsed by the planning board.
I understand this, the, the problem is, the surveyor would have been the one to establish what that lot line was, and had we not signed the original one, I don't know that he applied to what that was. Uh, and now he's signing something else, and we're asked to not update a previous plan, which is, because we're updating it as of today. Uh, we're not using, I'm assuming the date's gonna be today, not, uh, January of 2019. So if we're doing it as of today, uh, I don't think, I don't think we can, or we should be voting approving a plan that we know now is not correct, especially when you're adding a surveyor's, uh, stamp, which you didn't have before. So that may be the reason why it wasn't accurate, I don't know. But it's now accurate, that it should reflect what's, I mean, current status of the, of the pot.
All right, if the plan, any board wishes, we can do what Mark suggested.
Yeah, this is Joe, I, I, I agree, as long as we're gonna correct for one thing, um, shouldn't the correction we've already voted on in terms of the lot line be included, uh, to prevent any problem going forward?
That's fine, we can do that, I will ensure that the, the plans, uh, the bylaws will be an exact, um, reflection of what's on the latest A and R, and I'll get you new bylaws on Thursday.
I'd, I'd be fine with that, uh, anyone else have a, a question, comment on this?
That, that is the only change, though, other than that, just the stamp.
Correct, and we, and we, we, we understand if there's a change to the retail buildings, that we'll be back in front of the board. So it's exactly the same, other than that, um, property line change.
Yeah, I understand, thanks, that, that'll be helpful, thank you.
And this is Joe again, it kind of begs the question, given the fact we just adopted that policy, allowing the, uh, chairman, or in this case, Steve, to sign on the board's behalf. Uh, does that present a problem to you folks?
As, as long as it's valid, I, you know, I, I, we're okay with that.
Then we just maybe delay and, and get that certification back that reported.
That's what we're gonna start.
Is the time restricted to you guys?
Is it, so, so it's gonna have to wait till the next meeting for you to vote on it, or can you just?
My understanding is, we have to send the certification to the clerk that gets reported. We have to just circulate that around and go back to Paul, that gets reported, probably a week or so, I don't know if you have the time, can you share?
Yeah, that, that's, that's not an issue.
I, I think if we could, I, I, I'm coming a little late to the party, so I don't know what you just passed, but I think we would prefer to have everybody's endorsement on it.
Well, we just, we just went through and, uh, we're gonna temporarily allow one signature for, for the A and Rs in these plans, uh, but it has to be approved by the entire board, so, um, we have to, we have to.
What about the subdivision?
Same thing.
Yeah, same thing.
It applies to subdivisions into A and Rs, it's a book prepared by our council.
Yeah, I think the concern was that if, you know, we're gonna have to individually sign and send it to the Town Hall, that it would delay. If you needed it right away, then we'd have to figure something else out, but, but if it's okay that you wait till that's put in there, that's fine.
And Chair, if I can add, um, Town Council recommended that, um, this particular application, that the members who voted previously, uh, for the subdivision would be the same ones that voted on this, uh, to sign, they revised the corrected app, uh, corrected plan. I think any member that was here after that, I think her reading between the lines that they wouldn't sign that, but you still have a quorum anyway, because five of you were on, on the board when the subdivision was proved. Steve, you're on, your, your mute's on?
Uh, who, who wasn't on, it was, uh, Scott and Kevin? Kevin on.
If there were two that went on, on, it would be the two of us, Steve. We were on in October, but, um, maybe the original plan was approved prior to May, perhaps?
Yeah, yeah, I think it was before. Yeah, we were there for the A and R, but not the original. Um, so, so I guess I would need a, a motion from, you know, for Orin, Julie, Joe, or Tim.
The, the question I have, and, um, maybe Susan, you can jump in, is this still, we approve this as a modification, or is this minor modification, as opposed to a Scrivener's error? Minor modifications don't have to have a rehearing, I just said, there's a, a call under a Scrivener's error, it's kind of strange. Uh, is it okay to just call it a minor modification for which a hearing is necessary? And we have the, all the Scrivener's error to avoid, question of the hearing.
Well, as I recall, your bylaw says that if something is a minor modification, uh, the board can decide to waive, uh, any other part of the procedure. But, Orin, I should probably know, a Scrivener's error does not imply in any way a modification. Uh, it means it was just something that was inadvertently left out.
The problem is, this change, it is a modification of that plan, that's where I raise it. I, I wanna get you in the same place, um, I just, a little, uh, putting a stamp, or you missed a stamp, or, you know, uh, calling something X when it's Y, that's a Scrivener's error. Uh, when you're changing a lot line, uh, I just have a tough time saying this is a Scrivener's error, because it's really not. It was something that was overlooked and they had to change, and it's a lot line change. Myself would be much more comfortable calling it a modification, and I'm happy to waive any other requirements, to make sure you're on the hearing. Uh, but I'd be, myself, be more comfortable calling it a, a minor modification, uh, than, than that. And then it's just a Scrivener's error.
But.
I, I think it's excessive to call it a minor modification. We intended to come in just for the, adding the stamp to the subdivision plan. The A and R was revised after the subdivision was endorsed and recorded. Is that right, Mark, in terms of dates? So, uh, that, that's why I'm kind of pressing on the Scrivener's error, I, I hear your point. I mean, provided the board would be willing to waive, uh, any additional hearing or, uh, any other requirements, we could, we could agree to the, uh, to the minor modification.
Now, this is Joe, the only concern I have in, um, is that on the agenda, we're talking about Scrivener's error, not a, uh, modification, so I wouldn't want anyone coming back and saying that, uh, this was not on the agenda.
Just take you a look at the rules.
Yeah, Joe, I agree with you on that point. Are we good with accepting it as a Scrivener's error?
I'm fine with it. The lot line correction has already been done at a previous meeting, so that's a matter of record.
Well, that's our preference. Okay, so I'll be looking for a motion to.
Did you find it in the regulations? Did you find regulations?
No, I don't, I thought I had them. Uh, I don't, I don't have them in front of me.
Uh, I, I, I have them. The section dealing with amendments and what, what provisions the, the, uh, the planning board has to determine if a public hearing is needed or not. I share that with you.
Okay, what, what's the, uh, what section?
Uh, I'm pulling it up right now, it's four point seven. And I'm just sharing the screen here. I think one.
Actually, I have it as well.
Okay, I'll just leave this up so people can see it.
Please scroll down just a little bit, Paul?
Sure.
I think this would definitely fall under point C in the minor, if we wanted to go that direction.
Yeah.
But to Joe's point, I would also be fine putting this forward as a Scrivener's error, this is Tim.
Yeah, and, and the A and R was already.
I mean, as, as we, as I said earlier, the, uh, and, and as Joe pointed out, the, uh, the agenda spoke to a Scrivener's error.
And so, again, I'll be looking for a motion to, to approve this with the, this Scrivener's error.
Yes, well, Joe, I, I, I move and that we authorized the chairman to sign a revised, uh, subdivision plan reflective of the already approved lot line correction and accommodating the Scrivener's error.
This is Julie, I second.
Do we add, accommodating the, uh, the, the Scrivener's error as a, as a minor, as a minor adjustment? Do we reference it as Scrivener's error, or we call it as a minor adjustment? As a minor change?
No, because that's not on the agenda, I don't, I don't let, you know, solve one problem by creating another. I mean, the lot line was already dealt with, uh, at a previous meeting and voted on. We're correcting the lack of a, of a, um, stamp as a Scrivener's error, and while we're at that, we may as well incorporate all the past actions that this board has taken by virtue of correcting the lot line.
But you realize, uh, Scrivener's error is not, is not a reasonable, the bylaw basis to change the plan. It's, we might, it's not, it's technically a minor change, the Scrivener's error is a minor change.
But we already took care of the lot line at a previous hearing.
Okay, any further discussion? Uh, okay, so we gotta go, done the five of us, uh, Tim?
Yes, I'm on Joe's move.
Uh, Orin?
I'm sorry, the, the, the motions included the change to reflect the, uh, and you might allow reflecting the current lot line, or revise lot line?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Got it, Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, not yet.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. Can I apologize, I, I lost my mind here, so if you want to. Okay, um, so now we have the public hearing on the town meeting room, so we're gonna start the little center core zoning district. The amendment to Article is two, three, four, six, nine, and fifteen, is that right? So, we went into this in great detail at the last meeting, um, I don't know if, if Paul, you wanna just, um, do a brief recap, or, uh, just open it up to questions, or comments from the board? And then we'll move into, if there's anyone online from, uh, from the town that wants us to speak out?
Yeah, I, I, I don't really have anything to add based on the comments that you all had, uh, two weeks ago. I did have some, uh, follow-up conversation, uh, with an abutter who is, is online, and has actually, uh, I should point out, right before the meet started, we received a request from them to, uh, have the planning board defer your decision, and it's in Dropbox, and if you'd like, I can share that on screen.
Uh, what's, uh, does anyone on the board have any, um? Uh, let's, uh, does anyone on the board have any, um, questions or additions or anything on this? I know we, we were pretty thorough last time.
The question I have, Paul, if, if we vote on it now and we prove it, if it doesn't, we, if it doesn't hit the town meeting now, do we have to go through the process again? Are we wasting the, we need to vote again if it comes up again in fall? We don't, we don't go forward to the town?
In the fall, yes, I believe. I think, I think that was answered last, last, uh, meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, Paul.
I think we're, some cases, some new territory. Um, just so everyone's aware, tomorrow, uh, the select board is meeting. And I believe that's one of the discussion items is, is going to be a discussion about town meeting. So, uh, you know, it's a moving target at this point. Um, I, I, you know, I, I couldn't answer, uh, that. But if, if there's no action on it...
Yeah, it's probably been given us to move as if it was still going to take place immediately.
I would recommend that you do so. But though, uh, Mike units at the, uh, joint meeting a couple of weeks ago is very clear that June eight is not going to happen. But they are going to be looking at the end of June to have the town meeting if, if, you know, if they're, if that's a possibility.
Now, recall something about it. If it, if it was pushed out to June or even, um, August, that we would be okay. But I, I can't, I can't find it. I don't know what's where it actually, we talked about this. But I believe if it was pushed to the fall town meeting, then we'd have to redo it. Uh, we'd have to have another public hearing.
Renee, or somebody expressed concern? I, I don't, I don't care either way. I, I thought they were concerned about if it's going to be a, a difficult town meeting. They were concerned with having too, it's too much stuff on, on the agenda. And my guess would be the town is probably going to be pushing the marijuana by law before ours. And then the other question that I raised is what you mentioned, Paul, is that, that the decision on whether it's on or not is coming from the moving body, which would be us on the village court. So do we have to provide the selectmen with a, with a vote? Or is this, uh, what we'd like to see happen or what we're okay with happening so that they can take it off the agenda if they felt it was too big, too complicated of an agenda for a remote act or whatever the sneeze and turn out to be?
Well, I guess part of the, the answer to part of that question, Orin, is that would be to the, up to the planning board to decide if you want to make that recommendation, uh, to the select board. But if you take action tonight, even if you just simply say recommend for or against, uh, tomorrow I draft a, uh, the planning board report to the select board, then that is, you know, it would carry forward what recommendation you made tonight. I guess you could have, you know, an additional direction of you want to keep this on or not keep it on, uh, the spring town meeting. But as a part of the...
Can I make that call at the last minute as well? If we had, if we had to take it off the day of?
Do we have a vote before that? I think what Paul was saying, it's not his select people's call. It's our call because we're the moving party. Once we approve it and, and present it, they don't have a choice of not including it. Um, and then, I don't know. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying, and I don't know if we have another meeting in advance of that debate that say, no, we don't want to put it on. I'm not sure how best to deal with that. And I, I, I concur that this meeting...
Well, again, our, our, our direction was to move, to move forward as if it was going to happen and, and we're going to put forth whatever, you know, the board decides. So if things change and we'd like to pull it, then at that point, we'd have a meeting before that. I, I, I do agree, Paul. I think that it's going to be extended to the end of June. And at that time, we can, we'll have meetings before then and we can recommend that they, they take it off the agenda.
Uh, this is Joe. Can, can I just think out loud here for a minute? There is a, there is a, a statutory requirement that a public hearing has to be held. And I want to say within forty-five days, no, no more than forty-five days. And I may be wrong on that timeframe. Uh, the public hearing, uh, has to take place no more than forty-five days before the annual town meeting. Uh, we, we've got a couple of moving parts here. The, the planning board has the right to, uh, require that the board of selectmen place on the warrant, um, whatever language it feels, uh, should be placed on the warrant. Uh, so the selectmen, you know, based on the charter, which may or may not be superseded by some other regulation that is, uh, grown out of the governor's office. So the selectmen can't deny putting it on the warrant. Now mechanically, what may be able to be done, and this is out of, you know, I've never had to deal with this. The article could be still on the warrant. The planning board, as we are doing now, holds our public hearing. And the article goes to town meeting, but when it comes up, town meeting tables it to a future date. Though that may, and again, I'm thinking out loud. I don't know that this is, uh, legal or not, but tabling that article at town meeting to a future date may preserve the work that we've done. That's something that town councils will have to weigh in on. Now, there's... Continue the spring town meeting to a, a, a future date. So that if there's a fall town meeting, this would be held just before the beginning of the fall town meeting.
Scott, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Jim. This is Scott. I was just curious if we could provisionally approve it with a time sequence tied to it. When that timer expires, we then have to revisit? Just to keep it moving in, in the event that, you know, there is some kind of, uh, executive order that does modify or something to that effect?
I, I don't know if we can approve it like that, but I do, I do think that we can, we can always bring it back up, uh, as far as calling it from the, from the meeting.
Is it already in the warrant that's going out to everybody?
Yes, it's, yeah. Yes, this, these items are already in the warrant.
But the warrant hasn't been posted yet.
Well, true. It, it, the draft, the draft warrant is there, but...
But if it's, if we can, if you think it's going to be too confusing, if you can pull it from actually being in the warrant, that makes even more sense. So people can read something without having to go through our stuff and their stuff and then find that it's not going to be there and show up and it being pulled. I mean, if we're not going to do it, if we can take it out of a warrant completely, I, I think that's a lot clearer for everybody. Um, I, I'm, I'm not, I go either way. I'm not saying which way to do it. I'm just saying, if I'm getting a, a warrant with a whole bunch of stuff with all these amendments, A, if I go there, I'm going to get disappointed if it doesn't go forward. And B, it's going to be very confusing. So if there's a way of pulling it out of a warrant itself, I think that even has...
But I, my personal opinion, I wouldn't recommend pulling it from the warrant at this point. We've, we, this is our second, our second meeting on it. And, uh, we've discussed this and there's been a lot of work into this. So I, I think, you know, I'd like to see it move forward, at least at this point. And if we have to pull it at a later date, you know, due to scheduling and however the meeting's going to be set up, then that's one thing. But, um, again, all advice we've been given is, is to just move like everything's going forward the way it normally should. So I, I don't, I don't think we should make a decision based on something that may or may not happen. Um, I, I mean, I would recommend moving forward with it.
This is Tim. Um, as of now, we still do have a meeting scheduled for next week, correct?
Yes, a very full meeting.
What?
A very full meeting.
Right. But in terms of procedurally, um, if the select board is meeting in between those dates, um, we can kind of lay out an A versus B kind of action plan, not to take up top, yes, to take up space on the agenda, but in terms of taking it time, I don't think that... I think what we're, what we're discussing is the mechanics of town meeting rather than the merits of the article itself. So that's kind of where I'm sitting in terms of, I think if we are being told that it shouldn't be on the warrant, then we can pull it and we go on with our lives. Um, if we want to, unless we feel very strongly in putting it on, I think if Joe's mechanics make sense to town council, then if Amy can get us that answer by the next meeting, then I think that's a good approach. So that's kind of, we don't...
Yeah, if we follow through with it now, um, say, say we, we vote to recommend it now, we have the option of, of removing it at a future date. If we vote to just pass until the fall, then, um, that limits everything. So, um, again, uh, anyone else want to speak on this?
Well, Steve, go ahead, Joe.
No, go ahead, Kevin.
All right. So obviously, our decision should be made, um, around what we suspect the selectmen to do with the town meeting. But with that being said, I'd be fairly certain that they don't want any articles like this. They're going to bring in larger crowds than normal just to get through the town's annual business with the budget and that they would prefer to, to handle all of these articles, uh, in the fall town meeting. And if, if the article is on the warrant, even if it's not moved or voted on, it will still, uh, bring in large crowds because anybody at town meeting can move the article and open up for discussion. So even though our intent would not be to move it, anybody could attend town meeting, uh, and do it themselves. So I think the intent is not to have it on the town, uh, warrant at all and push it off until October. So with that being said, you know, I don't want political decisions to drive our work, but probably ninety-five percent sure that these articles are not going to be on any warrant until the fall.
My concern, and this isn't, I, and I told you so, it just, if you recall, I didn't want to go ahead and advertise this thing, uh, in the first place because I didn't think it was going to be dealt with this, this, uh, June. But, you know, we've already put, uh, one foot in the water by way of advertising, sending out the legal notices. Uh, and, um, unless we go forward with it with the possibility, and again, I don't know that it is possible, but I believe it is, that someone could stand up at town meeting when the article comes up and say, I moved the table list until... A meeting just prior to town, to the annual town meeting.
Oh, what's, the warrants are posted, do you know?
I'm sorry? The warrant, warrant has to be posted, uh, uh, I believe it's fourteen days in advance of town meeting.
Right now, we are on schedule. We're ahead of schedule in that regard.
Right. But if, if this is not what put on the warrant, uh, I'm quite certain that, um, we have to start this process all over again if we do it as part of the fall town meeting. I just, again, someone's gonna have to have the town council weigh in on this. I just want to continue the unfinished, the, the unfinished business of this June town meeting to a future date so that we preserve the work that we've done.
And Joe, you're, you're correct, Joe, but you're making the assumption that, that people are willing to do that and somebody will make that motion. It could go the, it could go the opposite way where somebody says, yeah, I want to vote on these tonight. And what I know is four, four two hundred people will show up on the marijuana bylaw, for example, thinking that since it's on the agenda, since it's on the warrant, that it may be voted upon. Uh, so the intent is, the intent is not to have too many people attend the meeting that otherwise would, would not have any interest. And to have anything on the warrant, the unknown is always there and people are going to show up here if, if it's on the warrant at all, regardless of what potentially could happen in the middle of the meeting itself.
Kevin, you're absolutely right. And again, this is why I didn't move forward with either one of these, although the, the marijuana bylaw wasn't ours, which is the IDC. I mean, neither one of them, uh, including our other, uh, proposed bylaw should have been on the warrant. Should have been advertised.
So Joe, give, give me the, it's, will, will, will it be posted prior to our next meeting, next week?
Well, it depends on when the selectmen decide the whole town meeting. If they decide June twenty-fifth or whatever, the twenty-eighth, uh, then they've got fourteen days. As a practical matter, you need a minimum of seventeen days. But...
Right, right now, the posted date of June eighth, we're, that would be within the fourteen.
Right, but they have no intentions of going forward with the, the eight.
Yeah, we still have, we still have to talk about marijuana next week, please.
Right.
So my, so my, and again, we, we can't speak on behalf of the selectmen for the town moderator, but, um, and too bad this meeting wasn't tonight's tonight now because we would know if the meeting tomorrow night, Paul, to discuss this. Is that what you said?
Uh, yes.
Tomorrow.
The Wednesday, the meeting tomorrow, Wednesday night to discuss this?
Uh, there, there is the meeting. Let me just confirm, but I believe it's tomorrow night. I have it on my calendar. I have it on my calendar for tomorrow night, six thirty?
And, and are they taking up this discussion at the meeting, whether or not, what articles to allow on the warrant and that kind of thing? I mean, my, my sense is they're only going to want to have a meeting for the required articles to get the town to move forward with the FY twenty-one budget and, um, any other budgetary financial type items. Anything, you know, like zoning or any other special articles, they're going to prefer to put those off until October. And Joe, you, you were correct. Um, I kind of said we'll let us wait. And that was quite a while ago. I was hopeful that the selectmen would have made the decision by now. But hopefully, it'll make it tomorrow night. Um, and then to Tim's point, I mean, our agenda's pretty full next Tuesday already. But if we close out the public hearing and vote on these articles tonight, you're, you're going to have to go through a whole new public hearing session if the articles are postponed until October and start from scratch all over again. Um, so that's something to consider, I believe, right?
And, uh, as you can see, I've put the agenda, tomorrow's agenda up.
I know, I know the board of selectmen, I believe, was waiting for, um, Governor Baker. His announcement yesterday, I, you know, waited at the last minute, but, uh, not on the selectmen, I mean, on, on the governor. Um, I believe that's what they were waiting on.
I missed. So hopefully, we'll have an answer tomorrow night. But I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we, in order to vote on these, we have to close the public hearing. Once we close the public hearing, if Joe is correct that we need to have a public hearing within forty-five days of the town meeting, then you'll have to open up new public hearings again if the articles are postponed until the October town meeting or fall. It may even be November. So you'll have to start the process all over again. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe.
Yeah, I mean, and, um, that was a concern. And I don't know, as I keep saying, if we can salvage that by not, not, uh, continuing this to the fall town meeting because that's a separate warrant. But continuing, in other words, not close out town meeting, um, in June on these, on these particular articles, move that out to a, a, it's the same warrant, but move it out to a, a future date. Again, that's something the town council's got to weigh in on. But in any case, for tonight, um, all that research can be done between now and our next meeting on the, uh, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-sixth.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can continue with this, just not close it out tonight and make a decision on the twenty-sixth.
That's what I would recommend.
Yeah.
Anyone else want to chime in, uh, on the board? Okay, um, and, and I know you, Paul, you said this...
This is Tim. Sorry, I was on mute. Is there a way that we can try to get explicit direction from the board of selectmen about what they're looking for coming out of this?
Uh, yeah, one suggestion I have is, uh, if, if any of you are available to participate in the, on the call tomorrow, at least to present, you know, the board's perspective, the, you know, the issues that you're going through. And I can certainly do that, but I think it's more effective if a board member does it.
Okay, I'll, I'll, uh, be on the call. Um, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the board, but... but I think what's paramount, paramount in their decision, in my opinion as well, is a safe fiscal, you know, town meeting, proper staging and precautions. And with the focus only on getting done the mandatory items to move forward with the town's operating budget. So anything, you know, on the fringes above and beyond that, I think it's to the point where you're compromising the safety of the town meeting participants. So I, as hard as it is and as much work as we've done as a planning board, you know, I think the concerns of safety, you know, rise above any, any of our, any of our...
And I guess, Paul, if this would affect your budgets in the middle for fiscal year, maybe that's something to address.
Well, it'd have to be, because again, they, especially if you, if we had to renotice particularly marijuana, you know, we're taking a pretty substantial budget cut. I mean, that, that will be a consideration. I mean, if, yeah, so I mean, that's, that's going to be one of the trade-offs people will have to determine. But yeah, it's, noticing is expensive.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, the thing that I hate to do most with this board is to pump things, but I think maybe we do continue it to next, next week at the very least. I think at that point, we should have answers from board of selectmen and we should be able to make up a mind on this. This is Scott, yeah, I mean, it seems like we don't have all the information to make a valid decision, so pushing it off to next week makes no sense, right? We have everything we need, we can make the right, make the right call.
Before we do that, is there anybody on the line that wanted to speak from the public, I guess? I think that's to somebody in the room that was to be about it or would submitted that letter to you, Paul?
Yes, I want to make sure that the board has said everything they're going to say. Is everybody okay with moving out of the public now? All right. So, um, is anyone in the public, who is here, I'm sorry, I can't...
Yes, hi, Paula Foss here and Bill Pharoah, we're residents of 16 Mansfield Ave. We're fairly close to the intersection of 140 and 123. And as we've been talking to people in town regarding the project, a lot of them don't even know that it's going on. We have a bunch of questions, and again, I know you've had some meetings about this. We have a neighbor, the Faze, that lives one house away from the proposed R60 changes and rezoning those, and they stated that they didn't receive any notice regarding that. It was under the understanding that it was supposed to receive a butter's notice of changes.
I would have them reach out directly to Paul.
Yes, I spoke to them today, and I thought they might be on the meeting tonight, but, you know, I think they can, you know, do that business themselves. But what I'm, we're concerned about is that there doesn't seem to be a lot of folks who know about the project. I guess that's probably their own, you know, own decision. But as we've gotten into the project and, you know, read the proposal, the information that's listed on the planning board, I've had all sorts of different thoughts and opinions about it. And one of the things that we had talked about was could it possibly be delayed so that, you know, residents could get more input on it? And again, that's, I don't know what your thoughts are about, people have had enough time. But I just know from my experience talking to folks at local by the post office on 140 that they seem to not know too much about it, but yet they have opinions about it, about some of the qualifications, some of the rezoning issues. So that would be our request, if it could be tabled to another time. I'm just out of respect all the work you folks have put into it, but I would hate to see it just go through because somebody got up and said, "Let's pass it", when in fact, I think that it deserves some more debate. There's a lot going on, some of the zoning changes are, they seem to be quite up in the air as far as who gets to decide how much development is there. Developers seem to have a lot of zoning tools in order to put in a large amount of development in the area. I drove through Mansfield, I'm familiar with Easton, they have commuter rails in Mansfield and Attleboro. And the development, the zoning, seems to allow buildings that are just about, that are as big as Mansfield. So I don't know how that works in the center of town. One of the issues that is also associated with the amount of buildings and amount of possible apartments is parking. I don't know how people are going to be able to go in, find a place to park, and either stay 15 minutes or an hour if there's minimal parking. And I don't know how well that's been addressed, whether there, there seems to be the direction that it will be up to the business owner to create parking. So I find that fairly vague, and I just don't know how that would come about. If somebody wants parking, somebody doesn't. If I want to go to one store, do I have to go to a parking lot in the middle of freezing winter and try to navigate to the stores, elderly, handicapped? How do we get around this? Is it a mall or is it a, you know, it seems like it's a mini mall where there are certain destinations, which, you know, more retail would be a good idea, but how do we get there, how do we park there? Who is the town center for, what are the functions of it? I, I don't get that from the proposal that was presented and the zoning, the warrant of zoning. You know, that's a lot, but I just, I don't get it, I don't see the logic of it. I don't, is there any town around that has, or one that we could view on YouTube that would give an idea of what this could look like?
So I believe we, we talked about this quite a bit, and not just the last week, we discussed this for, for months now. But Paul, is Mansfield one of the ones that looks similar, or somewhat similar to what we're looking for?
Yeah.
Somewhat, but, but they're more intensive than what we're proposing. They're, they're, you know, there's, some of those buildings are multiple stories more than what we would, that we've set as a maximum. But, but that, that's a scale issue, but yeah, I mean, other than the size of those buildings, we're still trying to achieve what they have done, or Easton, probably more like Easton, where it's, you know, you see two, three-story buildings where it's just a better pedestrian streetscape for people.
In the last meeting, I believe we went through, you had a, you had a few pictures, and there was several different towns we discussed. They're similar to what we're looking for.
Yeah, and, and that posted, the, the, that presentation's been posted. In fact, it's updated based on the recommendations that you had last week.
Well, I did see those pictures of the Easton. I also drove through Mansfield last week and took several pictures, and Foxborough as well. And I unfortunately couldn't get them into the presentation tonight. But a lot of the Mansfield buildings are four stories high, and I just don't know how will we know the extent of how many of those can go up? It seems, it's, but the developer will propose it, and it's up to the town to approve it. But four-story buildings will absolutely dwarf CBS and some of the other buildings that are in town. So four-story is an issue, and the, we would ask that that would be, you know, limited to a three-story building, which is still going to be large for the center of town, but would fit more in with the rest of the town architecture. Wheaton has four-story buildings, but they also have a lot of open space around it that balances it out. If we had a series of three or four four-story buildings, you would have quite, quite a block that wouldn't fit in with the neighborhood. You're surrounded by R40, R60, it would dwarf those buildings. It just doesn't seem that, that, seem that that's a cohesive plan to, to, you know, place up to residential properties. So you have to understand too, that that would be like 24-hour, the Village Commercial is basically business hours. These large buildings, amount of, something light business, will be 24-hour buildings. And that really changes the center of town and the people that live next to it. So I think that there should be more restriction on the heights and amounts of building. I had asked how many apartments might be able to be zoned in, and because of variables, the answer is it's a little hard to tell, so...
Right, it would be, it would be pretty much of a meaningless number because there's, you could, you could take any site and develop it in a number of ways. So, and, and your worst-case scenario would, you know, it, very unlikely would you ever hit a worst-case scenario. We're trying to, we're trying to do the opposite. Now, I understand where people, you know, this, you know, people look at these and try to figure out what's the worst thing. I want to, you know, the way we approached this was, we feel, we looked at it from the opposite approach, was how can we get better development than what our current code can do? And this is why we came up with it, was to have, you know, to allow more aspirational and more creative and better quality development than what you could see now under Village Commercial. That was the intent behind it. Because too, if we, if you ran the same thing, you know, for Village Commercial, you'd probably see some numbers that would scare you even under today's. But again, as we talked about, oftentimes you'll never get to the maximum because the more units you put in, the more parking you have to put in. It starts to, it starts to cause a project to actually shrink at some point. Another thing I want to just point out too is, you know, if you're, you know, the, the planning board would be reviewing projects in this area, if it's over 5,000 square feet, it's going to get a planning board review specs, so issues that come up, the public has a chance to weigh in, and the planning board has the ability to make adjustments to any project that's in front of them, particularly if a special permit is required, which it would be in this case, probably.
Yeah, I, this is Bill Pharoah, I'm at the same address, and we, but, let me summarize with something that might be actionable. It seems, uh... If... The concern I have is that the, we like the intent of making the town center more vibrant, of making it a destination, and I understand also the business proposition that you have to allow something that, to be built that's economically attractive, where else no one will invest. So I get both of those things. The concern we have are two things. One, even with the work that's been done and the way it's been explained, it, and, and with the controls that are in place, with the, with the reviews and the permitting process that's in place and all of that, we worry that it's too much up to the developers to put in whatever they want because they can make the most money, and we won't, and we don't really have enough restrictions yet to make the center of town what we all want it to be. And so we think it's a little too loose, that's one. And two is, it is surrounded by residential properties, and will continue to be, and it seems that the, the properties that are adjacent to the Village Center will suffer from some of the noise and light and activity that's there, and it'll alter the quality of life in those places. And I think that that could be addressed by a more explicit buffer zone between the two, perhaps of green space. Those are the two things. We think there's not quite enough restrictions yet to control what we're trying to have happen and the idea of some buffer space. And so the request is whether the board could consider whether that could be added to the plan. That's how I would summarize what we're trying to say.
Okay, thank you guys for your comments. Well, I think, right now, and I believe we discussed this last time too, right now, like a gas station could go in there, or a nightclub, I mean, any... We talked about a number of different things that could go in there now that would also negatively impact the current neighbors. So this, this kind of, in my opinion, tightens it up a little bit, but that's just my personal opinion.
No, I understand, and I understand it's a tricky, it's a tricky business, and a lot of thoughts going into it, and nothing's for certain and all that, so we respect what you've done, and our comments are respectfully submitted also.
Yes, and...
And also, I'm sorry, go ahead, Paul.
Well, the, it certainly does improve over the, the Village Commercial, but the, the, the concern is that how much more could be done? I mean, there's going to be better, obviously, but at the same time, there could be, with that height restriction or non-restriction going to 60 feet, it may never come to fruition, but if it does, and if you've got a developer with money and a plan, or two developers or more that want to get together and develop that, you know, they're pretty hard to fight. So, you know, you guys, we trust that you will protect the town, but at the same time, developers can be pretty aggressive and offer, you know, a lot of business development for the center of town for tax bases, which would be hard, not best, uh... So there's that issue. The other thing that we did want to bring up is there are four R60 properties that are on as part of the proposal to, to change the zoning, and just for our... Village Commercial, Village, uh, Center, Center 4. The, the thought of having more access from two residential properties to create, you know, participation over at the bandstand, the park there, probably won't happen due to the fact there's so much surrounding traffic. So unfortunately, even putting two properties there may not help that, probably won't. It would be good to keep the, there's so many other opportunities in the new district that they, I don't think we need to add to it. So the, the library has no parking, and the two properties on the corner there, if they want to become a bed and breakfast, or there are special permits within the residential that they are currently into change. So that seems to be, that that would be a workable situation for those folks not to cause any hardships. Also, the other one is the space behind the Bog Brewery and Ace Hardware. That will remove a very large chunk of forest that will, very close to the Fernandez Circle and some of the, backs up to the houses, or close to the houses on 140. It is a buffer zone, and if that could be, parking could be developed elsewhere, that would help to keep the preservation of the R40. It seems that R40 and R60 will be accepting and possibly sacrificing some quality of life with this development in town. The other concern I have, and appreciate your time for listening, is that it seems like it could become a very exclusive design for people who will be living in town, living in the apartments. And, you know, the walkability of those folks makes sense, the walkability of the, that walking circle that was placed on the map, some town folks, a lot of Wheaton will have access to the town. I'm not sure with the parking issues, how many of the rest of the residents of Norton are able to easily access, get in and get out if they want to do their personal business in town. So those are the main concerns, is overdevelopment, parking, and just the, the cohabitability of the, the VCC District residential. And that is, could be three, four, five, six more times intense as far as your land usage than the current Village Commercial. So it, it would be a big change for the center of town. I would hope that all residents would get to use it, that it would be developed responsibly, and that, you know, nobody has to give up any quality of life. So those are our concerns, and as I mentioned, there are... So those are our concerns, and as I mentioned, there are some residents that don't know about what's going on with this, um, I think that they will probably contact, um, Paul or the planning board, but that's why we had, you know, asked for this to remain open to, um, try to pinpoint what those developments, that development might actually look like. If it looks like Mansfield, it's not going to fit with the character of Norton.
Thank you very much for your comments on this, uh, uh, we're gonna, um, unless there's anyone else in the, um, that's on, that wants to speak on this, um, we're gonna move on to, I believe we're gonna, we're gonna continue this, um, I just wanna make a couple of quick points, uh, after those comments, um, I, I don't think it's intentional, but, Tim, hold on one second, okay? Um, I, I think in the comments, uh, Paul, you referred to it as a development, right now it's not development, it's, it's just a zoning change and, um, I just wanna make sure everybody's aware that, you know, anything that does, potentially is developed there would come before the planning board, um, and, and a butter's would have the chance to come in and speak as well, so, uh, I just wanted to be clear on that, and, uh, um, something you mentioned in the beginning, developers, yes, they can be pushed, I've dealt with them for my entire career, fifteen, twenty years, um, I, never once has one pushed me around, and I don't think that this board is prepared to be pushed around by developers, um, uh, that's, that's my take on it, just, so, so you're aware, we, I, I don't believe we've done anybody pushes around to you, um, but I do, I do know your concern on that, so, uh, Tim, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, just in terms of process, because I've kind of been involved with this from the beginning, um, just for Paula and, um, other people who are kind of listening in, who made up and part of the discussions before, um, the changes that were being recommended are coming in, uh, of a study that was done, um, in part with a consultant as well as members of the town and members of Wheaton, um, it was funded by a grant, um, and I think we actually started talking about this about two, in May of twenty eighteen, so, so it has been a kind of a long slog, and there were a couple of, um, open workshops and things like that, um, where people were invited to share their comments. Um, and sorry if you weren't able to attend those, I'm happy that we're able to get your comments. Yeah, I'm not sure, I, I'd have to go back way in my notes to figure out how all those were, uh, posted out and shared, um, but, um, just in terms, it's, this is not something that we've, uh, kind of thrown together, it's been, uh, a long process, a lot of stakeholders, and we're happy that you were announced, two of them.
All right, so, so, thank you, Tim, uh, so that being said, I guess we're gonna, um, I'm looking for a motion to continue this to, I believe, the twenty-sixth, is that our next one? The twenty-sixth, um, but we would need to move this and the zoning, uh, the BCC zoning map.
And do you also wanna include the other article, uh, Article twelve, which is the, uh, the amendments, uh, for, yeah, the requirement for signs and?
Uh, I'm, I'm fine with that unless anyone has any comments on the, the article for signs before we do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just to be sure, I just wanna make sure, is, is anyone on the line have, um, any comments on that, the, um, the amendment for the deletion requirement for this one, sorry, clarify the meaning of the amendment and, okay, Article seven, and delete the sign requirement. Sorry, I had to sneeze during that. Okay.
I move that the public hearings, Joe, uh, that the public hearing on both the, uh, Village Commercial core district, the accompanying map, and the proposed bylaw for, um, zoning changes as it pertains to signs, uh, be continued to, uh, May twenty-sixth.
All right, any further discussion from the board on this? Okay, we'll get on the line, Tim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Owen?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So these are continued to the twenty-sixth.
Steve, I'm sorry, it's not who seconded that.
Lauren?
Thank you.
Okay, um, so that's all we had on the agenda, there, there was one other item, um, the planning board has a, a designee for Circuit, uh, that's been me for the past couple of years, um, I'm, I'm happy to continue on, but if, if someone would like to be, uh, represent the, the planning board for Circuit, at the meetings, they're all virtual now, uh, for the time being. Can I volunteer at once?
Steve, this is Tim, I will respectfully decline it.
It's, it's not that, the, uh, oh, I guess they're not doing it this year, but the, the annual meeting is pretty nice. Um, so if nobody wants to volunteer, I'll, I'll, I'll do it again, I just need, um, to be nominated by the board, if that's what you choose.
All right, this is Joe, uh, let me be the first to, uh, make a motion. At the, uh, planning board's representative to Circuit.
That's good.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any, any discussion at all on this? We can keep.
I think we've had all the discussion we need.
All right, all, oh, wait, uh, sorry. Tim? Scott?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I don't know if I vote yes or abstain, or, yeah, I think yes. Um, th- there's a, there's a certificate that, um, has to be signed, I think, by the chairman, so in this case, it would probably have to be signed by Tim, um, so I'll forward that over, that certificate, I'm sorry, um, designation form for Circuit.
Okay, maybe I'll have to figure out my printer.
I'll, I'll get it to Paul, I think you can just scan it, um, oh, yeah, I'll get it to Paul and then, um, we'll get it over to you this week.
Yeah, I'll figure it.
All right, I'm sorry, I did it again, who seconded that one again?
Oh, nobody, no, nobody did.
Lauren.
Lauren, okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't know what world I was in.
All right, uh, unless there's anything else, do we have anything else, Paul? I don't think so.
Paul, you gotta email out that, uh, signature page for the A and R designation or?
Yeah, I'll do that, I'll do that in the morning.
Do the whole document, both pages?
Right, yeah, I'm gonna just do the update and just add that Steve is there and then you, you guys will have it, I'll put it in Dropbox and I will email you, uh, when it's ready. So it'll be, I, I was just putting a calendar note on there, you'll, you'll get it first thing.
When this is going, I thought you guys were gonna vote for having me mowing your lawns or something, come on.
Is, is that, uh, on the table?
No, no. All right, so I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second, from Scott.
Okay, Paul, you got that?
You know, I was waiting for that, yes, I got it.
All right, Tim. Ready to lose Tim?
I said yes, sorry.
Oh, later, uh, Scott?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Julie?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much, we'll do it again next week.